All right, welcome everyone to the Millville Planning Board meeting. It is Monday, March 25th. We'll start the meeting with Ro.
Jason Mealy.
Dan Maloney.
Preston Jaskovic.
Dan Williams.
Justin Allen.
All right. I'm gonna work through this tonight. We'll, we'll jump around a little bit to try to be as efficient as we can. We are up against the Board of Selectmen's meeting that's happening at 7:00. So please keep that in mind. We'll start with our public hearing for 54 Killney Woods.
Do you want to make a motion?
Yeah, we'll make a motion to open the public hearing.
Someone make a motion, open a public hearing regarding 54 Killney Woods?
I'll second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. All right, folks, come on up. Do you have a presentation for us this evening?
I'm sorry, do I have?
Do you have a presentation to walk through?
I just thought you would be going over the peer review from TEC.
Yeah, do you wanna come on up?
Yeah.
Eric Duval, TEC.
I did go back to my engineers about the stormwater control. Unfortunately, Andrew's survey has been brought out by Dupree Engineering, and they made it very clear that something so small, they're not interested in doing. They're just interested in big commercial projects, unfortunately. So it looks like I might have to find someone else to do this stormwater review 'cause Andrews, they're not prepared to do it, unfortunately.
With the board, I mean, I'm happy to go through these, like, high level maybe first, just to go through the peer review letter, okay? And one of the topics was certainly stormwater?
Yes.
Or lack of a proposal of any stormwater BMPs, I guess. For the sake of brevity, just because I know we have a hard stop, I guess I can just kinda go through some of the key takeaways of the letter, if that's okay?
Please do.
With members of the board. You know, one of the first things we noted out of the three seminal documents was consistent with the subdivision rules and regulations and the requirements for the plans and application, a lack of detail in the plans themselves. And it was, they were labeled as essentially conceptual plans, but it was our opinion that for this type of application, that there was insufficient detail. So that was one of the key takeaways to start. Part of that is part of the applicant's engineer's waiver request. There was 24 of them in their waiver request letter. The bulk of them pertain to stormwater management requirements set forth under the subdivision rules and regs. But we also noted in here that the town's local stormwater bylaw and regulations promulgated thereunder also require a stormwater management permit because eventually this development, as proposed, while it may be, end up being a private accessway or common driveway, it appears that it'll disturb over an acre of land as part of a common development between the roadway itself and the two lots at the end of that roadway. So we felt, the recommendation of the board was that stormwater management consideration should not be waived, especially given the slope of this particular parcel, excuse me. And the town has an interest certainly in its public way in its municipal stormwater infrastructure that's downgrading the site, that some form of stormwater management, whether it be through low-impact development techniques, that there be some considerations paid, you know, to that. And then the other thing we noted that was kind of a key takeaway in here, there was other waivers too amongst those 24 that we didn't take exception to and ultimately would defer to the board, things like sidewalk requirement, curbing, and things like that, which we would understand if this, if there was never an intent for the town to accept this as a public way, that, that would be fine. Of course, dependent on whatever the stormwater management design may be. You know, if it hinges on having curb and gutter arrangements and things like that, well, that's, that's a different consideration. And then there was also some waiver requests or lack of provisions for emergency vehicle turnaround at the top. And while we weren't necessarily thinking that, and I believe it was 120-foot radius maybe is in the subdivision rules and regs, when we weren't thinking maybe along those lines, considering it's serving two lots, maybe some consideration for a hammerhead turnaround or something to that effect in the event, you know, God forbid, emergency vehicles need to get up there, they would have provisions to turn around. And also, on the same, along the same vein with emergency vehicle access, was the considerable slope that was proposed at 12%, which is over the fire code's 10% that we had commented on, but it's an abrupt change in grade from the, from Killney Woods. And typically, you know, anything, a grade change over a percent would require a vertical curve to sort of ease that transition. This grade change looks like it could be, depending on the cross slope of Killney Woods, the existing, it could be maybe 13% to 14% grade change. So for certain apparatus, they may very well bottom out trying to negotiate that. And then one of the other takeaways too, and it was one of the first waivers, was a request for a waiver of the bond, or executing a bond for this. And while we understand, based on the applicant's submission, that this may always be a private way, that we had recommended to the board that a bond, at least in the amount to what it would cost the town to stabilize the site in the event that construction ceased out there, the project stopped, and it was midway through, let's say, if you had disturbed earth up there on a considerable slope, the town would have an interest to stabilize the site so there would be no erosion or, you know, sedimentation onto the town's right-of-way or into the municipal stormwater system. So those were kind of the, the big takeaways. You know, some of the, the fire access considerations, we ultimately kind of defer to the board or the fire department to weigh in. But that's, that's pretty much the bulk of our review of the applicant's documents that were submitted. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Does anyone have questions?
So, just, just wanted to follow up with the fire department. We did get some feedback from the chief, and he too was concerned with the grade.
Sure.
Because of the length of the driveway, which is about 325 feet, it's about what it is on the plans, as it's laid out. He was concerned that he would bottom out getting there with any apparatus, which means he wouldn't be able to, you know, service that property in an emergency. Now, one thing that he did say, and I asked permission, he said we could speak to this. He'd be willing to allow the 18-foot roadway as opposed to the 20, and he'd also be willing to waive the turnaround.
Okay.
So I thought that was a great compromise, but he is concerned with that initial grade. And to the storm, I think, at the end of the day, with stormwater management, that's gonna be a big issue too.
Yeah.
So I think that's definitely something that should focus on, but I thought it was really great that the chief kind of gave his opinion.
I appreciate that, yeah.
So I thought that was a positive thing.
Yeah. And as regarding the bond, that will be up to the, whoever, you know, does this development, that will be up to them to provide the bond, correct? That's how it usually works.
I'm not sure, like, would that be between you and your builder to make that decision?
Well, I'm, I'm proposing to sell this anyway 'cause I've just been fighting the town so long on this with, first of all, the Conservation Commission, and this has taken so long. So I'm, I'm probably gonna sell, sell it.
I hope you don't feel it, to me, I'm speaking for myself, that we're fighting you in this. We're, I think we're more than willing to, you know, get behind this project, obviously.
And I appreciate that very much. You've been very supportive all along.
And that's my opinion, I don't speak for the board, so.
Any other questions?
Are there questions?
Well, more comments than anything else.
Yep.
I read through a lot of these. One of the waivers was the 2-inch crown from a 5-inch crown. And I, I think TEC's recommendation for a 3-inch crown on the roadway is practical. It's a good compromise. And I think, again, my opinion, all of the waivers that TEC didn't have a problem with, I don't either. I do know that the fire chief also made comments to one of the last ones regarding the fire hydrant and fire alarm. Again, not an issue because he doesn't have any services out there anyway. So that was just something you could check off as, as not, not a problem with him.
And I know that when Killney Woods was about, there is a huge system.
There's one there.
There is one.
I did see some pipes coming up, so I'm guessing that's where their access is.
Down towards, you know, where there's a double way in. There's a big system there.
He had no issue. I guess, again, with him, for all of the points around this, it was just that slope.
Okay, thank you.
Dan, do you want me to do?
Yeah.
Okay. Dylan Tom, Junior Town Planner. I was hoping that your engineer would respond to TEC's comments, but it sounds like you're having trouble even getting it to continue with this part of it.
Yeah, unfortunately, yeah. But it looks like I'm gonna have to get someone else to do the stormwater plan.
Yeah, 'cause even, you know, even what we have so far, I would love to see comments back. And anything that, that you and your engineer agree with out of these comments, that you're saying, "Okay, you know, we can change that. We can go back and redraw that or change the grade a little bit." We'd wanna see that on a new plan. And anything you wanna push back on, you can push back on in comments. And that way, we can move forward and say, you know, here's the, the agreement between your plan and what the planning board is looking for.
Okay.
Something that the town can agree with.
I can get back to him about, you know, the other things you mentioned, but I think the stormwater, they're just not prepared to do. I mean, it's like, for instance, one of the projects they're working on is some huge big warehouse for Amazon somewhere near Boston. So my little thing is, it's not even on their radar at this point, you know, so.
It's unfortunate.
Yeah. But I can certainly get back to Andrews about the other, you know, the grades and things like that, see if they can put those on the plan, okay?
So the next steps we're looking for is hopefully getting some of that comments back and...
And worst-case scenario, I would suggest, if, if you can't get back to anyone and, and, you know, the, the plan can't be changed anytime soon, that you withdraw without prejudice. And we have the hearing again when the plans are updated. But I don't know, it depends on if you can get an engineer and get this, you know, looked at again.
Is any engineering company around that you work with well that?
I don't know.
Anyway, no.
I never built a road myself, sorry. They're all being eaten up, I think.
Is that something that TEC could tackle?
Not, given our position now, or, you know, our involvement with it from this peer review contract, you know, representing the town. So unfortunately not.
All right.
But there may be some firms, you know, in and around Worcester, you know, that you could, you could probably reach out to. I, I know there are, all of, for the smaller residential scale projects, they're, they're our weeks, months out from what I hear, so.
It took two years to divide into two lots from one, so.
Graves is fairly, you know, decent-sized, whatever, in Worcester. You know, there's, there's, you know, that's a start at least. I, I have a couple others that maybe I could share with Dylan even too offline, but maybe she could, you know, forward along.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that, thank you.
And if you wanna keep in touch with me and we can go forward and make sure that everything's...
I will do that.
Okay.
And I'll get back to you about the other things that have come up in this and see if Andrews will at least do that part, okay?
Do you wanna make sure the audience?
Oh, yeah, so this is a public hearing. Does anybody out in the audience have any questions you wanna come up related to this project? Ron?
Hi, so I'm Ron Kelly. I live at 42 Killney Woods. This project is only gonna touch a corner of my backyard. I'm not really worried about that. I am worried about though is, like you mentioned, about the roadway going in. I noticed my neighbor, which they did a comparison of that 40, 40-foot wide thing in his driveway, I've seen trucks get stuck coming down his driveway. So I'm probably gonna see the same thing there. But my main concern is, when construction is going on, how are they gonna remove that stone? That whole, that hill is just a massive rock. I mean, I live two houses down, and when I dig in my yard, it's, people won't come back and dig anymore.
But when you get on top there, it's, it's, it's not too much le, when you get on the top there, there's very little light up there, really.
Well, that's, I'm hoping, I'm just hoping there's no blasting going on.
Yeah.
'Cause that's...
Not there yet.
I...
'Cause then that'll be a problem.
Yeah.
I'll say if there, if any blasting were to occur, that would be a whole other property process, and you'd be well aware of that.
If I may, to the chair, we had noted too, as part of this review, and it seems it's typical, Board of Health would weigh in in terms of the suitability of the site. We didn't see any soil testing, onsite soil testing that was done, or any soil profiling that may give an indication of rock or amounts of rock. So that was something we had commented on as well, that, that there be some form of, you know, soil suitability assessment basically there as well, that may...
I would really have to hate to drill another well. My well is pretty deep. I don't want water stoppage.
Understood.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right, so we'll close the hearing now?
You wanna continue it?
Continue the hearing.
You wanna continue the hearing for now and... Just do it April 15th for now?
Just move it to April?
Yep.
Okay.
And if you, if you don't make it, just let me know and, and, you know, we'll talk. But you can always continue to another hearing and postpone, okay?
Do you have the date, so I can...
Yeah, I know we moved our April dates around.
Let me just make sure I'm right before I say that. 15th, April 15th.
All right, so if good with you, I'll make a motion?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing for Killney Woods Project for April 15th.
6:00 P.M.
At 6:00 P.M., sir.
Is there a second?
Second.
Dan, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. All right, we'll see you back here in a couple of weeks. If you have any questions, reach out to Dylan. Thank you. Thank you both. Next up, we have an appointment with Roland Barrett.
Hello.
How you doing, Roland?
How are ya?
All right, so you set this up with Dylan. You wanna give us a quick overview?
Yeah, so I have a business certificate for 13 years to operate horse and carriage business. And during COVID, we weren't going out and doing rides. Doing it right from home because of the situation of COVID. And we just wanna continue to do it. My business certificate has it, and it's been looked over by the police chief as well for public safety. I am licensed by the state to be, to be doing it as well. And that's, and Dylan was asking about it being agritourism. Agritourism is allowed if, if it's on a farm-based property. And people come to, if they come to purchase eggs or, and be an appointment only, it's not gonna be like where it's three to, a three to, you know, three or four hours, six-hour business every day, every weekend. The animals can only do so much, obviously. So it's by appointment, one family or one group of friends at a time. And it would be, at the most, every two hours, maybe half-hour ride, and then that's it, rest time for the horses with three rides a day, and that's it. And it's really through the summer months because it's daylight later. You might, might have one at night, depending if people wanna come out. And, and then in the, on the weekends would be there. And all our parking is off-road. I can, I can fit 18 vehicles. My business certificate says that I would have about 10 maximum, which I don't see everybody in a group or everyone in a family coming with all sorts of vehicles. Wouldn't be economical, but I threw 10 vehicles on my business application to, to make sure that I was covered. And that's all, that's really about it. It's, it's all farm-related. If you look up the Massachusetts Department of Agriculture's use of agritourism, it's, it's a, it's an avenue to educate people on the, the way of life on a farm, educate them on different types of animals, plants. We have apple trees growing. We have a variety of produce we'll plant every year, providing the woodchucks to take over again. But other than that small little problem, that's all. It's just a, I'm not too far away from retirement, so that's gonna be my, my retirement hobby job, which it has been really my whole life. I've had the animals, been doing carriage rides for 22 years out of that property. Only for the last 13 have I been doing it for, I say profit, but my wife would differ with that. It's, it's an unprofitable business with the cost of grain and hay. But it's, it's, in my eyes, a very fun business and, and healthy, you know, healthy, healthy business for mind and body.
And you're here to ask like about a special permit for this at your property or...
I don't, so I talked to the, the State Agricultural Commission, Massachusetts Department of Agriculture, the director, and she's, Ashley, what was her name? Oh my God. Anyway, she, she said to come to the planning board and say what we're doing and say, basically, you know, to make sure that it's within our bylaws. The Millville bylaws does not address agritourism. And when you read the state definition of agritourism, it is, "Agritourism encompasses a variety of activities, including farm tours, mazes, pick-your-own, pick-your-own," and then you leave it blank as, you know, whatever type of produce or, or fruits. "Farm stay, bed and breakfast," I'm not into that, "but accommodations, hiking, nature study, and so on and so forth." And then goes to hayrides is one of the, there's a whole bunch of different, you know, bicycles and this and that. But, so I'm interested in the hayride portion, and it is in there as in the mass agricultural tourism definition, so.
So Roland, you've been doing this for a long time.
22 years. Well, 13 years for, for money, but...
Not being fresh, why, what's, what's changed that you wanna, that you need to come before us to?
Well, I...
Do you know what I mean, like?
Yeah, so I've, I've had my license with the Massachusetts Department of Agriculture for 13 years to operate a stable and to have animals for hire. I've had my farm permit through the town since 2002. And in the last couple of years, there's been another license that I need, believe it or not. It's called the Horse Carriage Driver's License. And that's through the Department of Public Safety.
Isn't that what a hackney license is essentially?
Yeah, pretty much, yeah. So, so I'm, I'm actually in the process of getting that in the next week or two, waiting for an appointment to, to go to wherever the location is to take a test. And then, but they, they said to make sure that, in my application, it's to make sure that the town is okay with it. So Chief Coop said the, that my business certificate is, is approval of the town doing it because the public safety portion is, you know, review, all business certificates are reviewed through public safety as well as any other.
I'll also say the business certificate is also reviewed by me and zoning. So zoning enforcement has looked at it, I've looked at it. If you have a valid business certificate, it's been reviewed by all the departments.
Right, and, yeah, so I have the insurance. I have $2 million worth of insurance. I have 55 years' experience driving horses. I, I drove horses before I took training wheels off my bike.
It's the best sound I hear out of my house going by. Something I enjoy.
So, you know, so, yeah, I've been doing it my whole life. I'm a fourth-generation horseman, and I wanna continue to do it. My grandchildren are really starting to take a liking to it, so.
Dylan, do you see any issue with what you, Ron's?
I think your business, your business license is through home occupation?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, you have a home occupation permit then?
Yeah.
Yeah, you might need an actual home occupation permit from building as well, but that's like a quick online form that takes three seconds.
Right, yeah.
You might need that too. But, but yeah, it's building department.
All right, so I talked to the building inspector, and he's...
And he's good?
He's all, he's all good 'cause he reviewed my certificate as well.
Yeah, the business certificate is all he needs for this.
And then he said the farm stand is, is good as long as the border health, 'cause we do have baked goods in our, and we have a home kitchen, residential kitchen. We have that license for, you know, baked, baked goods only, you know, not, no, no cheeses, no creams, like, you know, like terminology for the food.
All border health, oh yeah.
Yeah, and the border health, the border health, actually, we just recently renewed the border health.
I'm not hearing that we do.
This year's...
Do you see anything that we need to approve or disapprove on this, if it's...
Like what role would the planning board have in this, other than being like, "Wow, that sounds cool"?
Right.
Unless you were just here for the free advertising for all three of our viewers.
Yes, so, no, the, the Mass Agricultural Commissioner, she said to just run it through the planning board. And then she also said it to be considered a farm, you know, to be designated as a farm. We need to show $1,000 of revenue and/or file for a 61A. I'm not interested in 61A. I'm really not looking for a tax break because it's not gonna be much, and the town needs all the tax money that we can get. Being on all, all the different boards in town, I know firsthand how strapped we are, so. And I'm not looking for that. I just wanna be designated as a farm. And then my last and final question, I think you folks would help with is, what do, and, and the Board of Selectmen also would, would be, I know two members, as well as myself, would definitely assist in whatever way we can, is how do we become a right, how do we adopt the right-to-farm bylaw in Millville? Like, I think 80% of the towns around us are.
Can you, can you educate us on this?
Uh, yeah, it, there would be a general bylaw, I believe, unless, we don't have a charter, do we? Anyone know? I don't think we do. Okay, so it'd just be a general bylaw. One way to do it would be to bring a citizen's petition to town meeting, so you can do a warrant article through that.
Okay.
That would probably be the quickest.
Okay.
Otherwise, you could talk with Peter to see if he or the Board of Selectmen will sort of bring that as a, because of the conflict of interest, I think a citizen's petition might make more sense than doing it through another board.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, it, you just write up what you want, and you, I, you need a number of signatures, I think. And then you can get it on the warrant article, I think.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure that'd be a pretty low controversy, warrant article.
Yeah, that's true.
What is the, I guess, what is the sort of purpose of doing it? Like, what is, what is that right-to-farm sort of giving?
I believe it'll actually overrule some town bylaws when it comes to what's allowed and what isn't.
Okay.
It's, so...
Like backyard chickens. I know we have a bylaw for that, but...
Right.
Right-to-farm, like, mostly, everyone can have chickens, but maybe not roosters. But like, it's a little more openness of people, like, having a chicken or two.
Is that something that, that would come from us? Like, as we look through our bylaws and stuff like that?
No, 'cause it's a general bylaw. I, I don't know if the planning board is the only, I'll have to check how Millville does it. Most towns, like, the planning board will at least review it, but it won't come from the planning board. It'd come from a citizen's petition, and the planning board might have to just review it and give a recommendation, yeah. As for the farm distinction, you also mentioned, Millville's bylaws make no distinction between exempt and non-exempt farms. So if you don't have a state distinction as a, like, a state-licensed farm, you're still a farm based on Millville's bylaws.
Right.
So we don't have a distinction between the two here.
Right, 'cause we have, our property is 2.78 acres, and then we have another adjoining property, which is another 2.65 acres. We're over five.
You're over five, yeah, yeah. Yeah, you need five acres to be a state-licensed farm.
Totally landlocked. It's the Southwood Zoo. It surrounds three quarters of it and then I'm on the rest.
The right, the right to farm, the, you know, some towns have a distinction between these state licensed farms, which have to be over five acres and meet a number of specifications. Right to farm communities, you don't need to have that five acres and that license. It's just a little easier for people to do agriculture on their property.
Cuz, yeah, cuz like my, my insurance, uh, woman, um, she was saying how there's, she's got, she does mostly all farm license, uh, insurance. So she says she's has farms around Massachusetts that don't even have an acre.
Yeah.
But they have some chickens and they grow some plants.
Yep, yep.
It's a farm. But, and it's, it's just a status thing, really, and, and then it allows certain things to happen.
Yeah. Yeah, and it wouldn't just apply to, to the Barrett's property. It would apply to any property.
But you're never, you're never, um, um, exempt from any border health rules and regulations, any building code regulations.
Exactly.
You still have to follow all that, which I get, I get in a health inspection on the property and the animals from the town and the state. And, well, the mass, so two from the state, the town, the mass agriculture and also the Massachusetts Department of Public Safety.
Redundancy, redundancy, redundancy.
Yep. So, um, and I've, in twenty-two years, I've never had one say, you know. Oh, sorry, one time I did. I left my tractor in the paddock and I went to work. I came home.
Listen, you got your audience where you want them. Don't, don't worry about it.
They said my horses could've got hurt if they walked into the tractor, which is true, but.
All right, well, do you have any other questions for us? I just, we have a few other things to get through.
That's it, so.
All right.
Um, so I guess business as usual for me then.
Seems like business as usual from the planning board.
You have no issue with what you're doing.
And you can contact me with any more questions and I can at least help you through any next steps.
Sure. Okay. All right. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
And you won't be late for the next meeting.
No, I know. I'm already here. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Um.
Do public forum, please.
Yeah, we'll do, uh, public forum. Do you wanna come up? Do you have any questions? Just hanging out today? Thanks for coming. All right. Um, perfect. Uh, I want to get to, um, bylaw warrant articles and where we're at with, um, with that.
Yep. Um, so I don't have any papers due today. We looked them over last time. Uh, I can send the drafts via email, uh, but I'm about to send out the, uh, hearing notice. Um, so that will tell everyone in town that, that we're gonna be bringing these to town meeting. Um, we're gonna have a hearing on April fifteenth. Um, let's see. My one issue is the fourth one we had. We had, we had four warrant articles. Um, the fourth one is, uh, adding the, the language for the planning board and the roles and responsibilities and the term limits and things like that.
Yep.
Um, I gave that to Peter to check with town council, make sure we're putting it in the right place and, um, and that this all makes sense and it's everything that needs to be put in the right, you know, where it is and what it says. So we might not get that one in for spring, but the other three are ready to go.
Okay.
And it's just to wait to hear back from council?
Yeah, so we're gonna wait back.
We can do it in the fall.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm gonna, I think I'm gonna put it on the hearing notice, but we might just wanna pass over that one maybe. So we'll, we'll leave it on. It's already bookmarked in the warrant articles, so it's, there's a space for it.
So it's there if we can do it.
But I think we might. If we're wrong, we'll pass over it, yeah.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, April fifteenth at six o'clock. You already set that hearing date, so I'm gonna send out the public hearing notices and get it ready to go. And, um, anyone who wants to see the warrant articles can contact me, planning@millvilleMA.org.
Fantastic.
Is there a, um, select board meeting on the fifteenth?
There's one, I think, like right after it, like the sixteenth or something like that.
Okay. I'm just saying.
Check the dates to make sure we could move it along.
Yeah, I mean, we're stacking that hour already, so.
I think they are hoping that we'll come in, I think, before the fifteenth. I'm gonna find out from Peter what day and if we can have just, you know, one or two of you to come. We don't need quorum. We just need like a representative.
Yep.
Um, and just explain them to the selectmen. They don't need your, your, um, recommendation till after the fifteenth. That's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, they're going to Tuesdays for some reason.
Yeah, uh, they switched around Tuesdays.
All right, perfect. Um.
And I don't have minutes, I.
No, yeah, we'll, we'll do minutes next time. I did wanna take a, a quick moment if we had, yeah, we have a couple of minutes, just a, a update from our walk on Saturday.
Yeah.
Um, maybe you wanna give us next steps and, and talk about it?
Yeah, yeah, so CMRPC, uh, held, supposed to be a little walk, but it was too grainy, so we ended up staying inside for two hours. Um, but people were talking the whole time. It was great. We had, um, a quorum from the planning board, so you'll have minutes from that one too. Um, and next step is they're going to put together an economic development plan for us, at least a draft, uh, talk about what Millville residents want to see in town, what, what we all think is possible to have in town. Um, recommendations for town-owned property as well as, um, how to open up our zoning bylaws for businesses in the business district and, and any of those privately owned parcels as well. So they'll have a draft by June. I think we're gonna try to meet maybe right before June or in June uh, and announce it again to the public to, um, be involved in reading through that draft and commenting on any changes people, any additions or changes they wanna make. And then CMRPC will incorporate that into a final draft.
That's exciting.
Yeah.
There were a number of suggestions that were mentioned for stuff. Um, are we planning to survey the constituency?
It would be nice. I, I can ask them if we wanna do a survey.
Okay.
Yeah, like an online survey or something.
I think at the beginning, a survey was, was part of it and she had said she had something ready for us to use if we wanted. So that might be something we can move forward with too.
I'll talk to her there tomorrow. Good idea.
They did say, um, just to pass it along, cuz I know that Jason wasn't there, that they were impressed that, to find out that we've been kinda going through our old CMRPC reports and kind of checking stuff off the list and.
Yeah.
Um, as you mentioned, this report will probably come up with another list of stuff we'll have to be, us to be working through. So it, it, it's good that we're kinda playing catch-up and, um, this is, this is gonna help us to, to do some real work down the line.
So if this, if we do get four across, that'll make eleven in the last three town meetings?
Three town meetings, a year and a half, yeah.
Yeah, that's pretty good.
Pretty good.
Well, now we need to add agritourism to our list of things we need to deal with, um, if it's not in our, our rules. And making up more as these meetings happen.
I know. There's always more.
It's being bored.
Yeah, of course it does. All right. Uh, any other planners update?
That's all I have for now.
Okay, fantastic. Any other questions, items from board members?
Next meeting is?
April fifteenth.
April fifteenth.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, we have a little bit of a gap.
We.
We could meet one of those other two weeks, but we don't have anything else. We, we're just waiting for this hearing.
I think if we need, if anything pops on central that we need to.
Yeah, I contacted the lawyer. There's nothing. So we got nothing going on.
Okay.
Yeah.
Regarding?
Eighty-three Central. I think, all right.
That's the only other thing on our plate, so I mean, if.
Eighteen Prospect.
That is it. That's.
Oh.
Yeah.
That's the correct one. Same thing.
Oh.
Yeah, I gave the wrong address. I don't know what happened. Yeah, no, no updates, so.
Yep.
Leave it at that.
All right, if there's nothing else, then, um, oh, we need to close our public hearing.
We did that.
We did that. Okay, so, uh, close the meeting, motion to close the meeting.
I'll make a motion to close the meeting.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Come on.
Thanks, everyone. Have a wonderful evening.